Quieter one. I was told I could do quieter ones. I call this meeting as Tacoma Park City Council order. Will call, please call and roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, I don't have much to cover in the agenda items and scheduling update. I'll note that Councilmember Schultz asked to pull consent agenda item number three.
A.
Yes, and so we will take that one up after the consent agenda. And just a reminder that this is the last council meeting of the summer. After this evening's meeting, we will go on break and we will be back with a council meeting on Monday, September 8. At this point, we will move to public comments, and we will first take public comments on voting items, and those, we will take them in turn in order, so we'll cover items 1, 2, and 3A. So anybody who wants to comment on Agenda Item 1, which is a second reading ordinance amending the code to add environmentally preferable purchasing. Seeing nobody, we will move to any comments on Item Number 2, which is a second reading ordinance authorizing a budget amendment number 1 for the current fiscal year. Nobody for that one?
Susan.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Susan Robb. I live at 203 Manor Circle, which is right across the street from the 7300 block of the business district of the junction. I was on the Tacoma Junction Task Force, and we looked at parking issues fairly thoroughly there, and in addition, I walked that block two or three times a day on a regular basis. And I would strongly approve of adding more parking enforcement. I routinely will walk the block. Sometimes there's no one parked on that, at the meters on Carroll Avenue. Sometimes all the meters are occupied, and it's a rare day when anybody has any money in the meter, and it's a rare day when anybody has a ticket. At 6:15 this evening, I walked by. All the metered parking on Carroll Avenue was occupied except one space. One person had money in the meter, and none of others' meters had been fed money, which tells me that we need more enforcement, so I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on the second reading ordinance authorizing a budget amendment? Okay, seeing none, we will move to Item 3A, which is the ordinance authorizing additional design and engineering work for the Flyer Avenue-Green Street project. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our general public comments, and that's on any non-voting items, which is the rest of the consent agenda, the work session, or anything not on this evening's agenda. Mr. Lovelace.
Hello. My name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. One thing I want to ask the people up there is, number one, is why do we have to have closed sessions? What is so secretive about that? That the public can't understand or can't get at? I'm just curious. You know, I've often wondered that. Number two is why can't we form a call-ins program where people can call in and give their public comment over the phone if they're too old or too sick to get in? You know, because we want to have everybody have a voice in Tacoma Park, everybody. So I wonder why we can't have a call-ins program, so call-ins can call in? And the third thing is, is I'm going to wish you people a wonderful, wonderful vacation, and I want everybody to work on what we can do to get more people active in our meetings and more people involved in our active city politics, and doing what we can to work for peace. You know, because I know we can do it, you know, because Oklahoma just had another bust, not Oklahoma, but Arizona, had a bust execution, just like Oklahoma had only worse, almost two hours for the guy to die. We've got to work on what we can do to get other states to follow Maryland's lead in getting rid of the death penalty, and I know we can do it. And I'm glad to see you doing very well, Mr. Siemens, on your heart, and I know your wife is very happy about that, too, and so ain't I and the rest of the council. And I want to also see what we can do to support things, people that are working for peace, not supporting the destruction of the Gaza Strip, and not supporting the destruction in the Ukraine. I'd like to see people working together to overcome that stress, overcome that horrible primitive thing we call warfare. You know, because I have a feeling if we don't do something about it soon, we are going to, we are heading toward a nuclear war. We're declaring war on our environment by allowing the coal point to be processed and built, and we're allowing the destruction of the environment by fracking in Maryland and fracking in any other state or country. We've got to speak up against that, and Tacoma Park needs to get off their duff and get active. It's not Jackass Park, where you can sit around like a bunch of donkeys and not do anything. And also, Terry Siemens, I'm glad, again, I'm still glad to see you back, working really good at the council meeting, but one thing I want you to forget is, don't think about it, but worry about the weight, and don't forget to eat your vegetables, Terry Siemens. Eat your vegetables!
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you. And during my council comments, I'll address your question about closed sessions.
Evening. I'm Joe Brown, community activist. I really appreciate this forum. I've done a lot of things in Tacoma Park, and continue to do a lot of things in Tacoma Park. Some things are acknowledged, some things aren't, so those of you who don't know me, those of you who do know me, you can tell the other ones some of the things I've done. I was at the White House yesterday, and somebody handed me this, and they happened to be from Tacoma Park, and the person didn't show up, so I'll read. "Beautiful dream of Israel has become a nightmare. Everyone ought to be sad at what the beautiful old dream of Jewish redemption has come to. Everyone ought to grieve the death of innocents." This is by Gabor Mati. "As a Jewish youngster growing up in Budapest, an infant survivor of the Nazi genocide, I was for years haunted by a question resounding in my brain with such force that sometimes my head would spin. How was it possible? How could the world have let us such horrors happen to us?" Well, President, or Prime Minister Netanyahu, he is doing surgical precision slaughter of innocents, the young and the old. You have cruelly blockaded Gaza for years, starving it of necessities. You deprive Palestinians of more and more of their land, their water, their crops, their trees, their medicine. You care about life? There is no understanding Gaza out of context. Yes, Hamas rockets are unjustifiable terrorist attacks on civilians, and that context is the longest ongoing ethnic cleansing operation in the recent and present centuries, the ongoing attempt to destroy Palestinian nationhood. The Palestinians use tunnels. So did my heroes, the poorly armed fighters at the Warsaw Ghetto. Unlike Israel, Palestinians lack Apache helicopters, guided drones, jet fighters with bombs, laser-guided artillery, and a navy. Out of impotent defiance, they fire inept rockets, causing terror for innocent Israelis but rarely physical harm. With such a gross imbalance of power, there is no equivalence of culpability. And what shall we do, we ordinary people? I pray we can listen to our hearts. My heart tells me that "never again" is not a tribal slogan, and that murder of my grandparents in Auschwitz does not justify the ongoing dispossession of Palestinians, that justice, truth, peace are not tribal prerogatives, that Israel's right to defend itself unarguable in principle does not validate mass killings. A few days ago, I met with one of my dearest friends, a comrade from Zionist days, and now Professor Emeris at a Israeli university. We spoke of everything but the daily savagery depicted on our TVs. We both feared the rancor that would arise. But I want to say to my friend, can we not be sad together at what that beautiful old dream of Jewish redemption has come to? Can we not grieve the death of innocents? I am sad these days. Can we not at least mourn together? Once again, the author is a Vancouver-based author and speaker named Gabor Mati. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else?
I hope so.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to council comments. I'll make a couple comments. As I said, I'll address Mr. Lovelace's question about closed sessions. There are two types of closed sessions. There are a whole set of them that are defined under the Maryland Open Meetings Law that set aside particular examples of meetings that can be legally closed. Some examples are getting legal advice, or something to do with property sale or acquisition, so that they're strictly defined in state law where they are deemed as being necessary to not have a public session on it. After the council has those, there are times when we decide that whatever advice we got, or if we got a memo or information, that we decide that we would like to release that, and we do. We had one of those recently. The other type of closed session, which we do not have to vote to go into, is of the type that we had this evening, which is an administrative function session, and that is the council acting in its administrative capacity rather than its legislative capacity. So that tonight's administrative function session was to talk with the city manager about his evaluation. So it tends to be those types of things where we're doing something that is not legislative in nature, and so I hope that gives a little bit more explanation about the types of closed sessions. I also wanted to provide a little bit of information about the matter that was brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago, I believe by Diana Cohn of Historic Tacoma, about the murals in the side of the building at Grant and Carroll in Tacoma Junction, and the fact that the mural on the side of the building and the small murals in the windows were removed. I've also had some correspondence from some residents in the city wondering about that. My understanding is that before that artwork went up, I guess about 20 years ago, that there was a specific MOU that was signed between the city and the property owner of that building, and it laid out that that art was going on that property owner's building, and that property owner had the sole right to determine if and when that art would be removed, and it was at that owner's sole discretion without any need for any communication with the city that that could be done at any time. And so what happened in this case, excuse me, was that the owner decided that because of renovations that he needed to do for a new tenant, that it was time for those to come down, and he could do that. So I don't know if there are other instances like that. I think I know of at least one other instance in the city where a building owner chose to put some artwork on the side of his or her building. I don't think there's necessarily an agreement like that MOU that was in place for the case in Tacoma Junction, but I think that it's something that the city could, that the council could ask the Arts and Humanities Commission if we wanted to, to kind of explore the possibility that for public art on private property, if there were some kind of agreement that might be reasonable to have, so that there's a reasonable expectation about what to expect on both the property owner's behalf and on the public's behalf for art that people assume is public art that may in fact not be public art. Also wanted to announce that the city was again designated as a playful city. We got notification of that today, and so congratulations to all of the people who have been working to make that happen. Also wanted to remind folks that National Night Out is coming up Tuesday, August 5, from 5 to 8, 6 to 9, 6 to 9, and it's next door here at Piney Branch Elementary. And then the final thing I wanted to note was that Councilmember Siemens and I had the opportunity to go to the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Board Retreat this weekend, and we heard a number of interesting speakers. The COG board's area that we've been dealing with this calendar year has been infrastructure. That's been the theme for this year, and we had some speakers who talked about infrastructure. One in particular who was very interesting, talking about ways to, the fact that there's a whole lot of public infrastructure that needs to be either built, or repaired, or replaced, thinking about this weekend's opening of the Silver Line on the metro system, or highway infrastructure, sidewalks, bridges, there's just all kinds of things that need to be funded, and there's not nearly enough funding to do them all. So different ways to approach how to come up with the funding for that, and how to think beyond just whether it be public financing, or private financing, or public-private partnerships, but ways to bring different entities together and how to do that. It was a very different and interesting way of thinking about it that had everybody energized and excited, and I'm hoping that the Council of Governments will again make, bring those people in and more widely disseminate some of the ideas behind that. And I know that the Montgomery County Council has already extended an invitation to them to come to speak at the Montgomery County Council, and I let the folks know who were at the retreat from the Montgomery County Council that Tacoma Park would like to be notified of when that is and have some of us able to attend, because I think it had some really interesting possibilities for funding things like, for instance, what we're going to be looking at later tonight for the Flyer Avenue-Green Street project, if there's additional funding that's required, or various things that might happen as a result of the Purple Line, or other possible redevelopment areas in the city. So I just wanted to let people know that that was very interesting, and I didn't know if Councilmember Siemens had anything he wanted to add about that.
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Just joking today.
All right. Councilmember Schultz.
Good evening. I wanted to take a moment, offer some general commentary, if I might, on just, on how things work in the city, for the benefit of those who are listening to our session here tonight, but for the benefit of people understanding sort of the role of a city council member and how we interact with staff. Recently, four different cases or problems have arisen in my neighborhood that I live in, in Ward 6, each of which was reported to me by a constituent who came to me, either knocked on my door, or I was, just became aware of on my own, about a problem that needed follow-up from people who work for the city government. One was a report that came to me on, about the possibility of illegal overcrowding in houses on Kingwood Avenue that's resulting in some stress on the neighborhood, and the possibility that people are being housed illegally by landlords. So that was something that I forwarded to the Department of Housing and Community Development and asked to be kept informed of, and I was, got a response that they would go to work on it. A week before that, I got a, two, three, three people come to my front door one sunny day saying that the activities going on inside Zion's Lutheran church that faces on New Hampshire Avenue is creating so much noise in the middle of the day that they can't sleep at night, or in the evenings, and they can't sit out on their porches in the evening, and the sound can be heard a block away, and can something be done about modulating, or enforcing the city's noise ordinance? So that was something that I referred to the police department. Then another constituent reported to me that there's some evidence of people living in a shed, a garden shed, in the backyard of a house behind them, and that these people are sneaking in and out of that area across somebody else's property without them knowing it through a hole in the fence, and that there may be drugs involved, and that that location shall go entirely undescribed. And another, there was a traffic accident on the 8,000 block of Wildwood Drive, the day before yesterday, where a car came speeding off of Carroll Avenue. Someone or another wanted, decided to turn into Wildwood Drive at, I'm told, a high rate of speed, lost control, ended up running through several yards, wiping out some small trees and bushes, and tearing up a lot of stuff, and by the grace of God, didn't hit anybody or anything, but nevertheless, just terrified people who realized what could have happened. So now folks there are sort of saying, we've got to do something about this. I'm not sure what. So this was something that I reported to the police department and requested some feedback as to maybe what was the cause of this particular incident. So these are the sorts of things that I think are probably pretty typical of what all of us on the city council field on a pretty regular basis, and I'll just speak for myself, but I'm sure it probably generalizes that we feel like this is something that's about as foundational to our jobs as anything can be, and it really requires cooperation from residents to report these things, but it also requires the cooperation from the city's staff, including, you know, the police department and other agencies, with all the people that work for us, to, you know, get this, the information, and get back to the city council member so that we can do our job in a timely sort of way, and keep, help keep, help keep the peace. It's a very critical process of information exchange, going, coming in and going out. I feel like a traffic cop. There's a lot of stuff that I cannot answer until I get answers from the people that work for us. On the other hand, the city staff tells me that there's a lot of problems that they can't even begin to address unless residents who live in the community report these problems, whatever they, whatever characteristics that they take on. And so it depends if it's a public works problem, or a police department problem, or housing department problem, or something else, like in the recreation department, which is another one I could mention that I dealt with on an emergency basis a few days ago. So I just, I'm not trying to prove anything here. I'm not trying to get on anybody's good side or bad side. I'm just wanting people to sort of understand what it is that we do, and how we try to do it, and how important communication, how essential it is, good communication and information is in order for all of us to feel like things are going well in our city. Thanks.
Are there any other council comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. City managers' comments.
Thank you. I just want to really cede some of my time to the police department, who is going to do a quick presentation, as I'm told, on the community Safe Cam program. I think they also made this presentation recently at COG. Just in terms of context as well, this is, again, one of the suggestions that I think came from the recent crime summit that we had around trying to provide sort of a platform for people to be able to utilize their own tools in conjunction with some, a platform that the city could potentially move forward on. So just wanted to give you a little bit of an update and a briefing on that, and hopefully, perhaps even when we come back in the fall, there may be some more actionable things that the council, that we'll put in front of the council in terms of how to execute on this program.
Just a reminder for folks that the chief is the current chair of the Police Chiefs Committee at the Council of Governments.
What, did I miss a meeting? No, I'm vice chair.
Vice chair, okay. Your vice chair, you're going to move up to chair.
Well, it's between me and Steve Hudson from Prince William County, and the loser of the fight gets the job, so, but yeah. And I also volunteered to be the steering coordinator for the LPRs, so that every jurisdiction gets some say in where they get deployed versus, you know, the people just putting in requests and putting them at National Harbor, or wherever they decide to put it. So we're hopefully going to have some equality for the smaller agencies as well, and deployment so that it creates a net that benefits all of us, not just one or two agencies.
You talking about fixed post ones?
All of them. I mean, there's COG money that was associated. Fixed post ones have a prob, I'll just do that really quick, because I know we've got a short amount of time, but the problem is the permitting and the state, and, you know, if it's on a state highway, that it just runs into a lot of problems. So we can discuss that at a later time. And I do apologize for not getting you the information. I had to run out for that tree down as we were in the middle of getting the information tallied. We had a tree fall today on two pedestrian, or a pedestrian with her 18-month-old in her hands. She's apparently doing well, but a little bit scary situation at that point, so, but I'll get, I'll get with you tomorrow on that one. I went in, you know, everyone here knows Captain Dan Freshcorn, been here forever, and he's taken the lead on the Safe Cam program. The Safe Cam program was used in Philadelphia, and when I was at IACP in Philadelphia, they did a presentation on it and the success story, so we'll go from there.
How do you change this? Can you change it for me?
All right, background on this. We had a lot of daytime residential burglaries last year, here at the beginning of the year, and we had that crime summit. We had robberies. We had theft from autos increase up in the Old Town area. So we were discussing things that we could do as a crime preventative measure, and one of them at the town hall meeting that they recommended was about LPRs and about private cameras. So looking at the, what this program deals with is cameras that are already in existence that businesses own, that residents own, and they make us aware of it and allow us to get access to their cameras for investigative purposes. Rather than going and knocking on all the doors, trying to find out what cameras in the area, this puts it all together in a database, which a private company maintains, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But it, for investigative purposes, it assists in closing crimes. It's also something that helps the community work together with us to solve some of these problems, and it's a crime preventative measure, because people that know that we have this going on know that we're working with the community to solve the crimes. We would be one of the first ones in this area, in the Washington metropolitan area, to have this. And I looked at a couple different locations when we did it, when I started looking into this. There's a Philadelphia Police Safe Cam program. They were kind of like one of the leaders in it. If you go to their website, you can take a look at, I have it up on here, I don't know if you can see it, but if you go to their website, you can take a look at their program. Also, New Orleans has one. They named theirs the Cam Aid Program. It was after Philadelphia's program, but it was a ward or an area in Philadelphia that was having issues, so they, it was Ward 8 or Area 8, that's why they named it the Cam Aid Program. And then Ventura, California, and Lenexa, Kansas. Those are just examples of a couple of the major ones that I looked at. The Philadelphia one, their website is very easy to navigate. It's very professional. They made it very simple to use. Some of the benefits, the registration on this is totally voluntary. Any residents or businesses that want to volunteer to register their camera, it just allows the police department, it's saying, hey, if a crime occurs in our area, you can contact me, and we'll give you any footage of any video that we have. It's a valuable tool to law enforcement, because we have, we did a cursory check of the city, and there's over 70 cameras that we've identified, and that's just a very cursory check. It's more cost-effective than the city maintaining and implementing its own camera system, putting their own cameras out. They found that a lot of places, a lot of cities that put out their cameras, one, they're not watched all the time, two, they're not maintained, there's a lot of vandalism, and they're, and they're not cost-effective. This also helps the community establish a partnership with the police department, because there, we're relying on information from them and getting them involved in it. Everything is, you know, it's not, it's not used in court as far as where we got the video. It's all unanimous. video, it's all unanimous, so they don't have to be brought in the court. It's a web-based platform, it's used by the community to register their camera, when a crime occurs, there's 24/7 access, so if something happens at 2:00 in the morning, the, the crime analyst, the investigators, they can log on to this system, which is secure, and they can find out, it's pretty much a Google, Google Map-type system where it's going to show, we put in a location, it's going to come up and say, these are all the cameras that are registered in that location. So that gives us somewhere to go to look for any video footage. The camera registration program, it records all of the information on like, how many cameras do they have, what type of system do they have. If they have remote access and they want to give it to us, we could do that, it's not something they have to do, but if, it's a newer camera that we can remote into and they want to give us access, we can remote right into it and look at the video. It's secured private cloud data storage through the company that we're looking at. Like I said, there's a record system that investigators can go in and look up in the area where a crime happens. This says a copy of, this is what Philadelphia's looks like, this registration, and then the information's verified, and then the, and then it's up and running, where we can access the information. Here's one on New Orleans, what theirs looks like. The company that I was looking at that did Philly's, they're getting a lot of calls from all over the country because this is something that a lot of places don't have. Like I said, we'd be one of the first in this area to get it. Mrs. Lenexa, Kansas is what theirs looks like. In Philadelphia, this is from the Philadelphia Tribune, from January 2013 to June 2013, they solved 85 crimes with 37 arrests, and that's just in a short period of time. And they have 360 cameras registered at that point when that article came out. So you can see how it would benefit us. We have a lot of examples of, of crimes that we've solved, and recent ones, in which we've used video surveillance. Like I said, a cursory review of the residential and commercial video systems that are already in place in the city, there's 70 that we know of, there's probably a couple hundred of them. So it'd be a great access, you know, a good investigative tool for the investigators. These are some of the local case examples that we had for video footage. If you remember the advanced auto robbery back in 2012, footage was used in that to secure arrests and convictions. Maple Avenue deli robbery down here on Maple in 2012, same thing with that, arrest and conviction on that. SunTrust Bank robbery, same on that. Tony's Villa and Subway commercial burglaries, we worked with Prince George's County, also getting video footage from their businesses and ours, and that helped close that and get a conviction in that. And then more recently, in July of this year, the Capital Store commercial burglary, in which we've identified a suspect using the video footage there. So that's just some of the examples. We had a juvenile that we charged in, with several robberies and carjackings in the city, and we linked them to several things in DC. This was brought up before, there were some citizen comments on it. There was video footage that was used from the metro, and also from Washington DC, from one of their private residence videos. And we used that in order to identify this guy and have him charged in, in DC with a, with a carjacking. Here's, here's part of the, the video from that. And this is from a private residence. So you could see if there was, if, if we had a, an idea of a quick place to go to find all these different cameras that existed, it just makes it a lot easier for the investigators. I don't know if you can see the, the video over there, but. So this is one of the suspects that we identified in Tacoma Park, and we relayed that information in Washington, and based on this video, they were able to identify him and, and have him charged in their incident. He's still pending trial. Some places like Philadelphia offer a tax incentive for citizens who get, get this type of program, they'll give them a certain amount of money up to the cost of their system in order to, if they have a cam system that overlooks a certain part of the right-of-way because it assists the, the city with, with security. This is the vendor that I was looking at, they're out of Philadelphia, they're the ones that did the Philadelphia SafeCam program. And as some of the costs, there's an initial setup fee, it's $13,250, let's see what that includes. It includes unique branding for the city with our own, our own symbols and everything, customization. It includes training, it includes a year of maintenance, and hosting, and support, and updates. And then there's an annual maintenance and licensing fee, which is $3,400. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Shultz.
Thank you, Mayor. I saw on one slide early on, it said licensee fee, I'm sure that, I assume that is licensing of the software or the website, it's not a fee that would be charged to residents?
No, no, it's, nothing's charged to the residents, it's a licensing fee for the software yearly, and it also includes, they, they store all the information, they, they maintain it, they, they do the maintenance, the updates, everything on it, and that, that fee, that yearly fee includes all of that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
When people put these on their houses, presumably it's, what, to video the, the property, the grounds around the house, is it usually just one camera, does it rotate, is it fixed?
Well, it just depends, you, and if you look anywhere on the internet, you can find these systems are $200, $300 for four and five digital cameras. You can get them pretty cheap for ones that you can even watch on your iPhone, so it'll send you alerts if anyone comes past them, it just depends what kind of system they get.
Okay.
If it's a newer model that you can, that you can go into and look at through the internet, it's possible if they gave us access, we could do that, but they don't have to. The whole reason of this is for us to know right away on any investigation, we can go in and find out what cameras exist in this area. Even if it's somewhere where a suspect may have passed by a certain route, we'd be able to get that video and, and help with the investigation.
What is, I mean, are you looking to encourage our consideration of this program for the city, I presume?
Yes.
But then, tangentially to that, you'd probably also be looking to encourage businesses and property owners, residential property owners, to be aware of the possibility that if they have one of these gadgets, that they could sign it, or register it, or they might just want to say, well, this is the incentive I need to increase the security adjacent to my business or home.
I think what, once we got it up and running, we would advertise, and I, I would assume that a lot of people would probably want to join it, because there's a lot of people, if you look at even the citizen meeting that we had on that town hall meeting, one of the main things that they brought up was private security cameras. I think that if, if it works really well, and we're, and we're seeing a lot of good come out of it, then later on, maybe the council would consider looking at some type of incentive for people to put systems in. But initially, you know, just to get that information, get people signed up, there's a lot of people that want to work with us to, to solve some of these crimes.
Okay, thanks very much. You don't have any more items? Okay, then we will move to adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening, from March 24th and May 27th. Would somebody like to move adoption?
Does that move?
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Mayo, second by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adoption of minutes passes unanimously. Okay, we will move to our first regular meeting item, which is the second reading ordinance, amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 7.08 and 7.08, adding 7.08.415 for environmentally preferable purchasing.
This is the second reading for the environmentally preferable purchasing, which again continues the city's sort of policy, as well as extends it a little bit more towards some more environmentally friendly options when we are procuring both services as well as products. This one was recommended by the Committee on the Environment after looking at a few other models from surrounding jurisdictions. The council discussed the ordinance at a work session on June the 2nd. Also, there were some comments that were a result of that work session, which have been incorporated into this second reading ordinance, and the city attorney has also reviewed this revised ordinance. There were a few comments, I think, after the first reading ordinance was held, and I think we made some of those changes as well, if I remember correctly.
Correct. With the, at first reading, there was an amendment to the ordinance, and it, it involved listing the various standards, the industrial standards, and so I had proposed a way to, to incorporate the amendment. Councilmember Mayo looked at that amendment, Cindy DiBalla from the Committee on the Environment looked at it, and between the three of us, they're, the language in front of you is, is the result of that.
And that's the language on the bottom of page three and the top of page four.
Exactly. Exactly.
And I assume everybody's fine with that language? Okay, good. So we have that first reading with those changes that we made, that we proposed to be made at first reading, and so that's what's been moved. Are there any additional council comments? Okay, this is the second reading ordinance with, clerk, please call a roll.
Was this moved just now? Did, I missed that?
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm remembering the immediately preceding item, which was the adoption of minutes.
Right.
Somebody want to move this?
So move. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Mayo. Now, would the clerk like to call a roll?
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We will now move to agenda item number two, which is second reading ordinance authorizing FY15 budget amendment number one. And that has the changes that were made at first reading with the amendment that was introduced and passed as part of first reading.
Yes. So again, this is the second reading for the first budget amendment for fiscal year 15. As you'll remember from the first reading discussion, the majority of these items are really carryover items from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 15, either because projects' timelines were extended or delayed in some way. We have a listing of most of those items, digitizing records, mini-grants, anti-littering campaign, and so forth. We also have some grants that are being extended in the special revenue fund, as well as some small renovation work that's going to occur in the teen room as a part of the facilities' maintenance reserve expenditures. Also, obviously, as a part of the previous first reading ordinance discussion, there was an amendment to add monies for a halftime parking enforcement person as well in this budget amendment. I think the council received last week some additional information that I had sent out about parking enforcement, just in terms of cost, and some previous information around parking violation revenue that the city has collected in the past. And I think that that is it for the explanation for that.
Okay. Would somebody like to move this at second reading?
Move.
I'll say, Councilmember Grimes moved it, and Councilmember Stewart, second. Comments on the second reading ordinance? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. I'm not sure that I saw the information that you sent out, because that was one of the questions that I was thinking about in terms of this amendment. And maybe I did, and I'm just too drunk to remember.
I will resend it. Did anybody else not receive the parking enforcement information? I will, I will resend it.
I think, I think one piece of the information was that, the, at least according to the, the work session item we have coming up at the end of this meeting, that it looks like the budgeted revenues for parking are $70,000?
Uh, sorry, say that's.
In your, in your report at the end of this evening's meeting, that it, it shows that the budgeted amount for parking is $70,000?
Yes, I think that is correct, yes.
So that we, we wanted to know kind of what, what the revenues and what the expenditures might be for the halftime, so.
So for, for this amendment, I think we have, in terms of cost, and these are approximates, we have about $45,000, which is to cover salary as well as fringe benefits for a halftime person. We provided a little bit of information about the number of parking violation, number of parking violations that the city has had over the past few years, which has been hovering around $3,000 or so. And we also had a figure in terms of the revenue estimates that we put into our budget every year. We have a third-party vendor that helps us with collection, so that takes away from some of the revenue that we have, but sort of oscillates between, I'm going to say, $70 to $100, $120,000 or so if you take out the expenses that we receive. I think it's, it's difficult for us, I think, right this second, to probably properly estimate what we think the revenue would be if we added another halftime person, because largely, my sense, without having spoken specifically to the chief, is that we would have some different times that this potential halftime enforcement person would be working. Also, just don't know what the curve would be around people who sort of start getting tickets, do they take corrective action? And so, similar to the SafeSpeed program, we see fewer revenues coming in over time, just don't know, thank you, don't know what the estimate would be, but, you know, largely, again, we've been, we've been net positive with revenue versus actual expenses thus far.
It's, may I continue? Then by experience, along with Ms. Robb testified earlier, that an awful lot of meters go untended when there should be tended to. So I'm thinking out loud here is that not only would this improve getting more geography covered, but more hours of the, of the time when the meters are effective, is that not correct? Is that your?
I think that, that could very well be true. That could very well be true.
And generally thinking is that it, while it may not pay for itself 100%, there would be a fairly sizable portion, I mean, within, I mean, your judgment, that the, a portion of the costs that would be covered.
Yes, I think that it's possible. I think it's, it's, it's possible. I'm hesitant, and if Yvonda were here, she'd be even more hesitant to say what the revenue numbers should be as a result of doing it.
Yeah, I don't think there's any way anybody can answer that question with great certainty, level of certainty. My, the reason I'm asking these questions is that in Ward One and Ward Three, I've understood is that this is a really big deal because of the pending development, an ongoing development that's coming, that just increases the pressure on parking meters. In my ward and perhaps others, there are no parking meters at all, so my constituents are going, I want, I'm anticipating that my constituents are sort of saying, well, what do we get out of it? I guess I could say to them, well, what you get out of it is probably, when you go to Old Town or Tacoma Junction, you're going to find more parking spaces available because people aren't sitting there with their cars, getting a free ride.
And my sense, again, without And my sense, again, without having spoken specifically to the chief, is that, that we probably wouldn't just limit parking enforcement to the Old Town area, perhaps for this person. So, I would very much like to think of this as a city-wide function in the specific area.
As I said last week, one of the issues that we have in our side of town is these permit parking zones. And, and we'd like to be able to rest assured that, that the patrol, that patrol our streets are, in this case, ours is between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, are actually, you know, doing something about the people that try to, who do violate that regulation. And it'd be nice to know that this person, or some, some of this time of this additional person could be devoted to, to helping the police department do that. That's all I have to ask at this point.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yeah, thank you. An overall comment on the budget amendment, I find myself really having to struggle to read through the document to try to understand the fiscal impact on the current or previous year's budget, and the example of the expenses or revenue that are moved forward. And then, the, the current budget year is a little bit easier, but it's still a bit of a read.
Right.
So, for me, in the future going forward, I guess just a simple table that has, you know, impact on current FY budget, you know, revenue and expenses and impact, I mean, I think those four numbers accurately sum up most budget amendments, and just in a tabular form would give me a much clearer sense, and I think constituents a much clearer sense of, you know, where we're adding money, where we're not. Again, I can pull it out of this narrative, but it's a bit of a challenge. And I don't know if colleagues have a comment on that, or any comments on that. I'll focus my comments on the, on the additional parking enforcement personnel. A couple of sort of follow-up questions. Let me just say, my, my overall preference on this is that we would have had some discussion about parking in front of the council. So, for example, the questions I have in my mind are, what percent of tickets that we currently issue are actually paid? How many go unpaid six months, 12 months after the fact? Because knowing something like that tells me how effective it's going to be to hire an enforcement officer to put yellow pieces of paper under windshield wipers versus some other strategy. I'd like to know in the past, but even more so, I'd like to know in the future in this address, as some of Councilmember Schultz's comments, what's the geography of tickets that we issue? I mean, my understanding is we issue tickets for meter violations, for parking zone violations, for time limits, 72 hours, I think, is the limit for parking on residential streets. So, I know, because it has happened, that residents have called the police to get a car ticketed or maybe towed, I don't know, because they sit there for days and days at a time, or maybe it's a stolen car that shows up. So, I'd really like to know what the geography of tickets is right now. I don't know if we can track that information, if we keep track of where our officers are issuing tickets or not. So, you know, I have questions about some of the issues like that. Similarly, I raised last week that I don't know whether our staff, either housing, community development, or police department staff, have made any effort to, to interact or network with businesses, to see if the businesses can do anything to encourage their patrons to park legally. I have certainly been to businesses where, when I walked in, in other places where I've walked in, and the businesses said, you know, did you, where did you park? And it's because they're trying to encourage their patrons to comply with whatever parking restrictions exist. I wonder if that might not be more effective. And I asked, but I guess we're unable to get information on whether we can figure out what percent of current parking tickets are given to residents, because that, to me, also makes a difference. The strategies that you would use to, to try to change behavior of residents and the ways you could communicate with them are very, very different than one-time or intermittent visitors from other parts of the area. So, those are some overall comments, some questions I wish we had answered before debating parking. Some of them, at least, are not that hard to answer, and we haven't had the benefit of that sort of discussion, which is why I, I plan to vote against this budget amendment. If it were to come up three months from now, I would probably vote for it, because I would have had greater confidence to have some of these questions answered, to have learned about whether we have taken other actions. I guess my one last concern is that, is there any assurance that if we hire a halftime staff person, that we don't lose some of the existing staff hours that are put into parking enforcement? So, one way we can measure that is the total number of tickets that are issued, but I don't know that we have any sort of indication of number of hours spent by staff issuing tickets or, you know, looking for parking violations, and sometimes it's just a matter of a daily routine patrol. But if we lose capacity that's currently dedicated to parking violation, you know, work, then we may not gain capacity. And so, I don't know if the city manager has addressed that issue, or has any plan to, to deal with that issue, but I think it's something to, to make sure that we, the intent is to get more hours of people looking for violations, and we need to actually have more hours of people looking for violations. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. So, supportive of the budgetment overall, and particularly looking at adding a halftime parking enforcement person. Parking around the city, and I believe it's not just in wards 1 and 3, is an issue we need to plan for in the future. There are some immediate issues that are taking place, particularly, we see this on Westmoreland. We talked tonight about some of the issues in the junction. Having spoken with residents, members of OTBA, as well as business owners, enforcement looks like it's going to be a piece of figuring out the puzzle on parking. It's not going to be the ultimate answer, I think, but it's a first step, and we have an opportunity tonight to begin addressing this problem. I think kicking it down the road is not going to make it go away. With Bus Boys and Poets opening, with the bakery and the Mad Physical Gym, whatever they call themselves, opening in the junction, you know, those are great businesses to have, but more people are going to be coming, there are going to be more parking issues, and we need to start addressing this. I'm glad the staff, while we're on recess, are going to be looking at parking. In my mind, and I sent this out to residents of Ward 3 last week, I see a couple of things we need to be addressing. I do believe parking is an issue for the whole city, and we need a holistic way of approaching it. I think we also, another priority I have, is not just enforcing and penalizing people, but making sure that we're keeping people safe. And in particular, there's one intersection of the top of Westmoreland, where people are constantly parking on that corner, and it is not safe for pedestrians, it's a heavily pedestrian cross area, and there's a playground right there. And that is just an area where I think if we can add a halftime parking person, we can address that safety issue. There's a bunch of other reasons I'd like to see us address parking holistically, and I look forward to us addressing this issue in the fall. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Stewart on just about every point regarding the halftime parking enforcement officer. I will add that I actually would welcome the, that person being diverted, if it is feasible from a staff management point of view, when it comes to snowstorms, to help the city in gaining compliance with existing regulations for the clearing of sidewalks. That has been a problem just about every year. Of course, some years it's a bigger problem, because some years we have more snowfall. We had observations from the Safe Roadways Committee this year, this winter, regarding snow clearing problems. To me, the types of functions that a parking enforcement officer and someone monitoring for compliance with snow clearing, and by the way, I'm using the word compliance intentionally rather than penalizing, because we want to gain compliance, they seem like similar enough functions that I would really love to see the city use that person for that additional function as needed. Thank you.
I've just got a few comments. I'll just restate briefly the, the points I made last week when I voted against the amendment, that, against the amendment to the budget amendment, that I really do prefer for these types of issues to be brought to us in a work session format with some staff work having been done, so that we have the information that we need to understand the ramifications of it. I think it's particularly important, as we do budget amendments, we're, we're early in the fiscal year, and there are other, other budget pressures that can come about. We just recently did the last budget. We didn't really discuss this. I know it came up as an idea mentioned by Councilmember Grimes, but with a specific caveat that he wasn't going to push it, so that we didn't really discuss it in that context. So, with that as the, as the precursor to getting to the point where we are now with having this kind of come up last minute on the, on the item, it's, it's also the fact that the city manager said, as a result of a number of concerns about parking issues, particularly around Old Town and the junction, that staff would be talking about these in August, and we would be coming back for a more comprehensive discussion about parking. So, the, kind of the overall context of it is, puts me in a position of wanting to vote against the budget amendment because of the, kind of the structure of how we got here. On the other hand, I feel like there are some legitimate needs that need to be addressed. We've been talking a little bit about what some other peripheral issues that are not immediately kind of parking meter, parking zone issues are, and one that hasn't been mentioned is dealing with an issue that Councilmember Schultz cares particularly about, which is commercial vehicle parking. We've talked about that a little bit as a body, but we haven't really come up with a solution. We talked about it a little bit, was it last week, when we talked about opt-in, opt-out, and how we interface with the county's code, and whether we might adopt commercial vehicle regulations that the county has, or whether we might take those and modify. And so, how, how we do that could affect the type of enforcement that we might have about commercial vehicle parking, which might address some issues particularly in Ward I know that one of the things that the existing parking enforcement officer does get used for is to fill in for crossing guards when they are out. So, I can imagine situations where the halftime person might be the one who has the hours that are needed for filling in for a crossing guard, so that there are other, there are other functions that aren't necessarily parking-related that I can imagine this person's time being spent on. And finally, I'll just say that Councilmember Mayo made a request that I've been making for a long time about budget amendments, that I find it much easier to track where we have some kind of a database or a grid system where we can follow, okay, this changes these particular fund areas or balances, or the emergency reserves, or the unappropriated reserves, how it affects those as we track through, so that as we go from budget amendment 1 to budget amendment 2 to budget amendment 3, that we know how that's affecting things, so that we're not just looking at it as we get to next year's budget considerations, and we're, we're saying, okay, here's where our general fund balance is, and you go, well, gee, how did it get there? It's changed by a good bit, or it hasn't changed by a good bit. We track it as we go through. So, I've requested in the past, and I'll reiterate the quest, request, that we get that tracking as part of the, basically of the fiscal impact on any budget amendment. All of that being said, I feel like, in spite of my wanting to vote against this budget amendment for the reasons that I've stated, I think I'm going to end up voting for it, because I don't want to be in the position of holding back on some enforcement that I think needs to happen. I can recall years past where we had one and a half parking enforcement officers, and I think that as the, as these parking issues that are being talked about in other contexts are addressed, and as we have those discussions in the fall, I can see that this will be part of a path forward to address those issues, and I see those issues getting larger and wider as we go forward, if we're successful in continuing the recent trend of some good economic development and some good business development in the city that will provide needed services close by for our residents, which we've all been wanting more of for a long time. And just a quick reference to the parking lot in Old Town that John R. Ciolo has asserted more control over, and you can see that asserting that control and managing it has resulted in more parking being available for more people, because people are not parking there and kind of abusing the parking space. And I think that this effort is needed. Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I just have a follow-up, follow-up question and a comment. Are other members of the police department capable of enforcing or ticketing cars that are on expired meters? And do they? Or is it just the left of the province of the, the one parking enforcement person?
I will let the chief answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, I wrote a ticket.
Thank you.
At, at the intersection that Councilmember Stewart was talking about for the car that was parked there the entire time I was eating lunch. So, you know, I do, any of us do, and then we do have officers that write them. We have officers that write left wheels to the curb, the abandoned auto tickets, et cetera. But again, for the, for the sworn officers, that's not their only duty. I mean, they have moving violations that they have to deal with, they have the calls for service, plus they have criminal enforcement activity. So, you know, parking gets pushed down to the lowest point for them, just by the nature. And there are times where they're actually working, doing crossing guard fill-in details, because Mr. Rojas is off, or we have two crossing guards there. So, yeah, all of us can write tickets.
Oh, thank you. I guess my, my final comment on this is that it seems like, you know, parking enforcement is sort of a, an apple pie kind of thing, that, well, you know, why wouldn't we want to do this? And let's do it, and so we have more of it, because you can never have too much apple pie or something. But I, I don't see that there's really any urgency. This is not a timeliness issue, and I think we could gain so much more about understanding, you know, a lot of the questions that Councilmember Mayo raised, and things that are puzzling to me that I'm not going, you know, I just don't want to take the time to get into tonight, about how parking enforcement can be done, and how we can do things to encourage people to be just a little bit more honest about how they park their cars and where they do that. And I, I just think that if we had more time for the staff, say during our August recess, to help us to look into this and come up with some more data, information about it all, I think I'd have better comfort that if we ask, if we add, were to add a halftime parking enforcement officer, we would get, you know, half again as much in terms of true parking enforcement. I mean, I'm a little concerned about the idea that this, these, these officers who are probably at the fairly low end of the, of the totem pole in the police department are going to get dragged off to be doing sidewalk snow removal enforcement or crossing guard things, and we might end up finding out that, you know, we're, we're right, we didn't really get anything out of it, in terms of parking enforcement. So, I, I'm not going to vote for this at this time, because I think it's just better for us to wait until September, or sometime in that time range, when we have a bit more time for staff to, to feed us information that we need, that we can make a more intelligent decision. And, you know, it may be that that's exactly how it'll, it'll turn out. I, I'm just uncomfortable with the idea of something coming up. I mean, the first time I heard about this whole idea at all was a few minutes before last Monday's session, and, which is why I supported the first reading, because I wanted to keep the, which is why I supported this amendment, to keep it on the agenda for, for tonight, so we could... I supported this amendment, to keep it on the agenda for tonight so we could at least have further conversation about it. But I just don't see, I don't like our being rushed into these kinds of things, particularly when there's real no urgency concerning it. I'd rather us wait and that's how I'm going to come out on it.
Councilmember, I think Siemens was first.
All right, I'll accept that. Thank you, Mayor. Last week, the city manager brought us a clean amendment for budget amendment. And after much discussion last week, the council voted to add this parking enforcement position as part of the amendment, which is, as we hear tonight, muddied it up for making the decision. But I voted against putting it in into this. I felt that we should have further discussion and work on the parking enforcement, or parking situation as a whole. But since it's already folded into this budget amendment by a decision of the council last week, I'm hesitant to kill everything else that is in here. Just because of that particular item. So in lieu of an amendment to withdraw that particular item, I'm left supporting this whole amendment in front of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of points. Thank you, Mayor. The first is that I think that paying parking tickets probably feels more like going to the dentist than eating apple pie. That would be my analogy, at least for me personally.
Sorry, I missed it.
You can watch the tape.
Okay.
It wasn't that important.
The second is, Councilmember Grimes raised the issue of snow removal, using this person for snow removal. The language in here is fairly precise, halftime parking enforcement. And I just wanted to get at least a verbal confirmation from city manager or city staff whether the language is flexible enough to allow the same person to be used as needed for snow removal enforcement as parking.
Yeah, I think it is. And actually, Mr. Rojas's position is nuisance abatement. So that is part of his job too, so.
Sure, okay, thanks. And the last is just a, I think, if I understand our process correctly and Robert's rules correctly, any council member could propose to amend this, just as we did last week. And that amendment could be to table this piece to, well, to table it, which would, I guess, kill it.
Your statement.
Or to table it to a date certain, to table it to September 30th or October 15th or whatever, to a date certain. And that's something we can do under Robert's rules. If I could just get a nod from the clerk that that's...
The whole, table the whole ordinance?
No, table just to propose to table whatever section it is. Section, section one, clause nine.
I think it would be to remove it with the intent to come back to it.
Right. So you would need to vote to take it back out. Someone would need to move and second and...
But you can't make a motion to take something out and put a date on it as you could for tabling something overall?
It would be unusual to do that, to, I'm not sure how that would, how that would work.
I'm thinking of the intent of Robert's rules is that you can give yourself more time. And you can give yourself time in the sense that, let me just finish this one point. You can give yourself time in the sense that you don't want it to go away forever and so you put a date on that. And so to me, this is a piece of an issue instead of the entire issue. So it seems to me the principle is the same, that one wants to delay the debate and final decision on something for a period of time, not kill it.
So I think you want to move to divide it somehow, to separate that piece off, to divide it, move and vote on that.
With additional language that would assign it to come back at a time certain.
Right, so...
And that's the kind of motion that I would kind of entertain, accept whatever, if that answers your question.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that I support the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2015 budget amendment. I think the issue with adding a halftime parking person is not that much of a big deal, especially with the fact that busboys and poets is coming online. We need to get in front of this rather than waiting till that restaurant, cafe opens up. In a year from now, the Carroll Avenue Bridge will be closed for renovation. There will be parking issues presumably in Ward 5. So I think it would be best if we did this now rather than waiting any more time down the road. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Question has been called. Do I have to accept that or can I?
I think you vote on that. That's a, it's a votable.
Oh, that's right. We, okay. So the question has been called. All those in favor of ending debate, please raise a hand. That's three, all those opposed. That's four, so we'll continue talking. Does anybody else have anything to say? Councilmember Schultz?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz.
If Councilmember Mail will make a motion or if he'll second my motion, either way, I'm happy to propose an amendment to delete the section that we added last week with regard to the parking enforcement. And so we're back to where we were before we did that with a condition that in the amendment that this would be brought back to the city council's attention in September sometime or when the city manager feels that he is completely prepared to deal with the matter.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Mail.
I guess I just wanted to get, I don't think I've ever heard a sense from staff or the city manager of whether and how they would use this position, of whether you all see a need and whether it's the sort of, I mean, typically when we add a position to open libraries on Sundays or, I don't know, other things we've added staff for, you know, we get some sense of how the department or the city manager feels about that change. So I guess I was just hoping for a little bit of a response on that issue.
My sense, like many enforcement items, is that there's always more that can be done. So there's, we're not, the city is, I don't think any police force is ever going to ticket every person who is committing a parking violation in the city. Honestly, nor do I think that that is the intent. You know, I think that as we talked a little bit about last week, parking is a citywide issue. And I think in particular, we're having a spike of some issues around the commercial corridor. And that's something we certainly, I think, want to address. I think I would love to be able to have a little bit more time to talk about this and to talk internally even with the staff a little bit more about parking enforcement and how that could potentially be a part of the parking strategy. We've got, we've got other, we've got other parking-related concepts in terms of community input into residential parking challenges, trying to make sure that we understand what the real parking challenges are. Because I've been in a few parking conversations where the cause of the problem was different for different people on even the same block, as an example. And so just making sure that we identify the right problem to solve. As I mentioned, I think before, just in terms of a process step, it's always easier when I think staff does have enough time to be able to answer all the questions. I heard a lot of council members saying that they wish they had more questions answered before being able to vote on this. And so I apologize for that. With a week's turnaround, it was difficult to provide, I think, all of the answers that we had wanted. Another point that I just wanted to, which sounds simple, but just to make sure everybody is aware of is that obviously by adding this, it means more tickets are going to be issued. And so surprisingly, we get a lot of comments internally about the number of tickets. Some people think we issue too many tickets in the city. And so obviously, my sense is that that 3,000 ticket number is going to go up if we add more hours and more parking enforcement. So it's just something for, I just want everybody to be aware of because I know internally we're going to hear it. The police is going to hear it every day. And so it's just another thing to think about.
Did you have anything to add to it?
No, I agree with the city manager. You know, enforcement will go up. I mean, this is not a position that is a total outlay of money. I mean, obviously, if not all, the salary will be recouped, but we can't guarantee that. But, I mean, historically, the city had one and a half, they had one, then they had two, and then it was back down to one. So it's not something that hasn't been done in the city before. It's just hasn't been done in my tenure here.
Thank you. And I guess just my other, a question and a comment, the question being for the supporters of the original amendment. If anyone wants to indicate whether it's very important for this to happen now as opposed to September 15th, that would be great to get your feedback on that. The second is that I guess if I could propose a friendly amendment to the amendment that's now on the table, which is consistent with the clerk's description of it, not that we want to delete this provision, but that we want to separate it and bring it back. I think that's probably what Councilmember Schultz was thinking of as well. So what we would actually want to vote on is not throwing it off the table completely, but separating it as the clerk said.
You're looking, clerk's looking puzzled.
No, I'm not. Is that what Councilmember Schultz?
He agreed that that was a friendly amendment. If I can just check one thing with the city manager. Are you going to be in town for the September 15th meeting or are you going to be at ICMA?
That's ICMA. And so I would, I would, and just thinking about some of the preliminary things which are not finalized yet on the council agenda, I would probably say that the earliest that we could have that parking discussion would be the last week in September or the first week in October. I think that's a more realistic date for when we could have that parking conversation, just thinking about some of the things that we have on the agenda coming up.
Councilmember Grimes or Councilmember Stewart? I don't know who was first. You pick them.
I'll go first. I just had a question of when's the estimated busboys and poets opening right now? What was the newest, the latest, the greatest?
Laura Barkley said August, but it was supposed to have been...
It's not August.
It's not going to be August.
Yeah.
I guess to answer Councilmember Mail's question, why now? Why not wait till end of September, early October? I'd like to actually see this put in place before the school year starts. Given the high areas where we're seeing some parking issues in Old Town and particularly in the Junction with the opening of the bakery and the physical trainers, whatever they're called, that's a high-traffic area. School starts, kids going to school, starting middle school, starting elementary school, new schools. Personally, I think if we're going to move forward, I'd like to see better enforcement in those areas before school starts or right around that time, depending on if we can get somebody hired. And then also, it does give us that backup crossing guard as well for the new school year. So that would be, that for me is the urgency.
Can the city manager or deputy city manager give us an idea of how long hiring process generally takes for something, if it were approved tonight, how long it would be?
It would be...
Or the chief?
Yeah. It probably will take about a month or so, maybe six weeks or eight weeks because there's a background investigation and polygraph because it is a position where they're enforcing the law and they have to, and actually, all our positions have polygraphs, but...
I was going to say two months.
Yeah, two months would be about.
So if it were done tonight, it would be end of September.
But if we did it in October, it would be...
If we did it first of October, it would be first of December.
Correct.
Councilmember Grimes.
So I'm once again in agreement with Councilmember Stewart. I do wonder about the dates. You said that we could bring this back, you think, the end of September or early October. But would that be for work session discussion? And then we would require two readings of an ordinance? So we're really talking mid-October and then add two months to that. So in terms of, is this pressing? You'll recall, I don't know, it was probably six months ago, a previous occasion when the chief was at the podium and I was pressing him on the city's parking enforcement standards. And that was response to a very particular incident. One of my constituents on Tulip Avenue near the intersection with Carroll called in to the police, a case where a car was parked into her driveway. So that's not just in the curved edge, but actually, my recollection was about a foot and a half into the driveway. I actually walked by her house as the police car drove up. The police took a look at it and drove on. And the response was, well, the driveway wasn't totally blocked. Car could still get in and out of the driveway even though someone was parked across the part of the driveway. So these enforcement issues have occurred, yes. I, as Councilmember Mail has said on a number of occasions, we don't want to divert police from enforcing laws that are much more relevant to public safety in order to write parking tickets. But there are public safety situations, as Councilmember Stewart mentioned. And I will amplify what she said about, so what I'm saying is I'm seeing significant issues, areas where I think there should have been enforcement, that there wasn't because it was police rather than a parking enforcement officer. So two particular things. We haven't discussed that we have added a parking pay station in the Tacoma Junction lot that will be active as of the beginning of September. Someone's going to need to be monitoring that or we will have wasted 15,000 or whatever dollars on that pay station. So that was addressing both the turnover of parking in Tacoma Junction, but also the parking of commercial vehicles in that lot, which is, takes away from space for shopping, shoppers and all of that kind of stuff. You already heard Ms. Robb, who's now left, who talked about the lack of compliance with our current metering system and all of that. So that's lost city revenue. I see problems. Just a few days ago, the end of last week, I walked from Capital City Cheesecake to my office by the subway. Someone was parked across the sidewalk. There was an open parking meter right there. The person was parked across the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk. I walked in and I said to the guy, please don't do it again. Actually, a couple of months ago, I had a discussion with Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Captain Bowers, who was at the subway buying his lunch because there was a vehicle parked in exactly the same space across the sidewalk. I didn't expect Captain Bowers to be writing a ticket for that. In that case, we asked the person to move. And there was a bit of poetic justice that someone pulled up on the curb and blocked this illegally parked car across the sidewalk, blocked that car in. Bit of poetic justice. So the last thing about timing. City staff, Lucine Air, the Safe Rads to School Coordinator, participated in meetings at Tacoma Park Elementary School and has come up with, and Roz Gruksby, I guess, was there also and I was, has come up with a plan to change the traffic flow, including certain parking aspects on Holly Avenue by Tacoma Park Elementary School. These things require enforcement staff that is my perception we do not currently have on staff. That's why I see a desirability to do this now. Thanks.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. This is some ugly sausage we're making tonight.
Never seen pretty sausage, but that's okay.
I certainly appreciate the discussion that's gone on, on this topic. And having listened to my colleagues on the council and they, leaves me to believe that we really are headed for putting money in the budget for parking enforcement officer. And I think the discussion here from Councilmember Grimes and Councilmember Stewart, it persuaded me that timing is an issue. And if we look at doing this and not actually making our decision until early October, that doesn't meet our needs. So all things considered at this point, I'm going to vote against the amendment. So all things considered at this point, I'm going to vote against the amendment to pull this out. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Councilmember Mail.
I will just second what Councilmember Siemens just said in that the city manager and police chief's testimony, as well as Councilmember Grimes and Councilmember Stewart's comments have convinced me as well.
Thank you.
And I'll third it and say I had the same conviction.
Fred, what'd you bring this up for?
I'm going to be the last of the Mohicans. So I mean, I listened to the city manager saying that he appreciated, the staff would appreciate more time to look at this, and I think that needs to be, to be considered. And who knew that this was, that we had a parking crisis on our hands when we just adopted the fiscal year budget just a couple of months ago? All of a sudden, we have a crisis that something has to be done just now, or all kinds of people's safety is going to be at risk. And I, I just don't think we need to be hurrying things along that much. I think we can take our time. Otherwise, we wouldn't be, if we do this in a, in a contemptuous sort of way, we don't get ourselves into these kind of snarls and tangles up here where we, we're spending a lot of time talking about something that, that's, that's a bit confusing and we don't have all the information we would like to have normally had and we usually almost always have from our staff before we, because of work sessions, before we, we, we take action on adding staff to the city's employment roles. And I just think that that's not a good precedent. So I'll stick where I am.
Okay, and I'll just add that I haven't heard anything that convinces me that we don't want staff to have some discussion during our August break about parking issues. I think we do need to come back to parking issues. And I look forward to scheduling it for some date like September 29th. So there's an amendment on the floor. All those in favor of the amendment to remove the parking item from the budget amendment? Please raise a hand. All those opposed? Okay, so that, the amendment fails. Six to one. Now we have the budget amendment as introduced, and that's on the floor. Are there any further comments? This is a second reading ordinance. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. So that passes unanimously. We now have the consent agenda minus item A on the consent agenda. Would somebody like to move the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Let's see, this is, we have a single, some single reading ordinances, so we'll need a roll call vote. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. We will now take up consent agenda item A as a separate item. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I wanted to pull this off the consent agenda is that we're talking about, about $170,000, $176,000 or $177,000 in city money. That's a lot of money to be, just sort of slipped through on the consent agenda. So it's a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I'm not going to, I'm not proposing any negative action here on my part. It's just that this is a, I'd just like to observe that the Flower Avenue-Green Street project is probably one of the most complex projects from an engineering and public works point of view that the city has taken on, that, that I can think of offhand. And it's taken several years already to assemble the funds, that the design and engineering process that's being undertaken by RK&amp;K, who we've used a lot in other projects and who are really good, is, we're finding out that there's more and more issues that need to be addressed from an engineering point of view. And we're learning that some of these issues arise because of utilities such as the WSSC from Pepco and, and the Gas Company. And then of course, we have input from affected property owners, some of whom are not even in the city, but nevertheless, they're affected, as, as, as well as people, people of goodwill wanting to make sure that when we do this Green Street project, we do it just right and make sure that it's like really, really successful. Unfortunately, my, my concern is that, I just want to draw everyone's attention to the fact that we were incurring cost overruns already. There may be more to come. And when I say cost overruns, this is not to scare anybody because according to the information that the city managers supplied us, most of these, virtually all of these costs are being covered by the WSSC in some cases, by the S, State Highway Administration and others. So we, we still look like we're doing okay budget-wise. But on the other hand, I realize that this street's probably been in place for at least 80 years, would be my wild guess on that. Probably one of the oldest streets in the city and it looks like it. Lord only knows what we're going to find when we actually do serious excavation. We might even find Greek statuary under there, for all we know, that, you know, it's some, become some anthropological wonder that we need to preserve. I'm kidding, of course, but typically when you start digging into the ground, that's when costs start going up. And I want all of us just to pay attention to the fact that we need to be really careful here, that we don't cause injury to our capital budget where we find that we've exhausted all the sources of outside funds and we're left trying to do, make up the difference ourselves. And so this is, my comments are somewhat forward-looking. I'm looking forward as much as anybody else to seeing this project get built and that it be a smashing success, something that we're all terrifically proud of. So I'm going to support this, of course. It needs to, we have no choice. It has to be done, this work. But it's just a word, note of caution that I, because it's, it's a big project, it's complex, and we don't have, we don't have control over it. And we're not, we can't exactly have all the controls over it because we, there's so many people, so many entities and organizations and unknowns involved. And I'm just hoping that these costs don't get any further out of hand than they already have. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Braithwaite, do you have any comments? Would you like to address my colleague's statement?
Can I maybe make a quick comment before she does in case you?
Sure.
It'll be all right with you? Yeah. I just, my, my comment is very specific to revisions to the plans based on community input and then based on response to particular property owners. My recollection of this community center project is that the architectural fees ran hundreds of thousands of dollars above what was expected because of unanticipated rounds of response to community and to committee comments and so on. So I, it's great to get community input, but it's best to make sure that it is managed within the expected parameters. Thanks.
Sure. Well, I think my comments were made on the previous meeting on the 21st, and I think Councilmember Schultz wasn't able to attend that meeting. This design process started in about this time in 2012. I think by all accounts, it's taken longer than we had originally assumed, but that had to do with funding and the community process. Anytime you extend a timeframe, you add cost to the process. Because we are working in an area where their private property was involved, you have to take the time required to address those property owners, negotiate easement agreements. To that regard, we were fairly unsuccessful and had to make significant adjustments to the sidewalk layout due to the opposition of people to allow the city to build a sidewalk across their private property. So that resulted in changes to the design. Once you start moving the sidewalk, you start moving the street contour, you add to the costs. We also have the challenge, and it's not just in this neighborhood, but in others, where you have old utilities. And we've been working with the utility companies as well as the bus service from the very beginning to try to bring them in, tell them what was planned and get their comments upfront in terms of, do you have any water main work planned? Do you have any gas main work planned? WSSC has gotten on board with that at our encouragement, and I think the end result will be a much more positive atmosphere for the residents. So there's going to be a major water main replacement project that we've coordinated with this. That'll actually help save the city money in the long run. Because we'll be joining our two projects, we won't have double mobilization fees, double traffic control and double impact of the project. We'll be able to share those costs. So while it adds to some complexity, it, it is assumed to benefit everybody, both in that construction as well as the end result. We recently just heard from Washington Gas that after two years, they've decided that they do indeed need to replace the gas main. So we kind of turned the screws up on them. As, on my last meeting that I was here, we literally heard on Friday that they were, had moved this in their project. We've since had a meeting with them last week, and they've committed to getting the gas main work done through their company before the fall of 2015. So they'll be in ahead of our project, which is a positive thing. So they've committed to get their work done in advance of this project.
So all that's. Fall of FY15 or fall of calendar year 15?
Calendar year 15, yeah. So they, they'll be moving forward in that project. So I guess all that's just to say that when you're putting this design process together, inevitably, you'll have comments and, and contacts. We've been trying to deal with a, a strong reaction we got early on that the project wasn't green enough, and we took that very seriously. And I think people probably came to this council hall and made that accusation of the project. So we've taken a hard look at our stormwater. We were able to get a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation to greatly enhance the stormwater management aspect of the project beyond what's required for the added impervious surface, well beyond what we're going to be actually putting in the ground. We also took a look at the lighting and the traffic calming. So those added features to the project and added design costs. And then worked very well with RideOn to try to make efficiencies to the bus stop project and make safety paramount in terms of bus stops and pedestrian crossings. So, you know, I guess I'm a firm believer that input is good and that it helps you continue to identify problems and, and try to solve them. We're not going to be doing this again in another hundred years. So now's the time to try to, to do as much as possible. The other last thing I'll say is when you go out to bid for these projects, you don't know what the end line is going to be. You just put together a scope of work that you think captures it, and you have to have a good faith effort. You know, the consulting firms make their good faith effort on, you know, available man-hours, what they're going to need. They don't really know what, what the expectation is until we really start working on it. So you try to balance that out. You hope that people are being, you know, the companies that bid on this project are being straightforward with their, their rates, and that's why we evaluate the, you know, the comments or the bid process that we get in to make sure someone's not overbidding or underbidding. We've got a lot of confidence with the firm we're working in, and I think they've been kind of tried and tested. I think they have a lot of legitimacy in the community based on the work they've done before, and they really do hear our comments and, and put them into serious consideration when they're developing the project. So, you know, they, they flagged for us early on anytime we were outside of their, their hours, and then when it became apparent that as the project was developing, we were going to have additional costs, they raised that. And we picked the time in which to bring it forward to the council and, and lay that out. That said, I don't really see a lot of additional cost creep in the design aspect. So I really think they've, they've captured it and they understand very well from this point, sort of where we're going with this project. I think they've got a real good handle on what the additional design costs are on. That said, once we go out to bid, we, we have cost construction estimates based on, you know, reasonable cost assumptions in the field, but once you go out to bid with a project like this, you just don't know what you're going to get. So you, you may see me back here at construction to say, here's what we thought and here's what it is. So we'll kind of cross that bridge when we get there. But all along the way, it'll be very transparent and we'll be upfront with the costs and identify what those are. If there's requirements for phasing or, you know, get one of this and one of the other, then we'll, you know, put that out there and try to make, make that a public discussion and a council discussion as it comes along.
Thanks. The city manager have some comments?
Just one more, really just a, a note to say that we provided, I think in the previous council discussion about this, and I provided this, this afternoon, to an estimated budget, and I think that Public Works in particular should be lauded for really trying to put together a, a sources of fund structure for the Flower Avenue project that really maximizes other people's money, to be perfectly honest with you. So there's a tremendous amount of grants and other support, including the TAP grant that we won last year. And so I think even with the cost increases of $176,000, the majority, if not all of that's going to be covered with money that we have already secured in one way or another for the project. And so I think a lot of congratulations actually goes out to Public Works too, for the, for the way that they have structured this project thus far. That said, I, I think all of us are fairly confident that we will have further cost increases for this project. It's just a function of it. Darryl mentioned when we go out to bid, don't know and we don't control exactly 100% of what we're going to get back. And so we continue to be mindful of areas where we can either conserve or where we can get additional money to support this project because there will be other cost issues that likely come up in the next year, year and a half.
Mr. Mayor, but.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
I asked this question before, and I, I want to make sure it's on the record again. Can we use the speed camera fund to pay for some of the Flower Avenue project?
We can use speed camera funds for public safety items. So if it's part of a sidewalk cost or a crossing, some traffic control design, we can use, we can use that for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I believe we have not introduced the item. So would somebody like to move it?
I'll second it.
Am I correct, city clerk? Okay, so moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Any further council comments? Okay, it's a single reading ordinance. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye, it passes five yeses to two ayes.
Don't confuse me.
Seven, seven, nothing. We have one remaining item on this evening's agenda, which is a work session presentation by the city manager on the third quarter report and financial report.
Thank you. I think in front of you, you have the third quarter of fiscal year 14. And again, just to remind you, that would be from the period from January 1 of calendar year 2014 to March 31st of 2014, so really the beginning of this calendar year. We're, I apologize, we're a little behind. We will be catching up in the fall. We'll come to you for the fourth quarter report for fiscal year 14 when we come back pretty soon in, in September. Just some notes that, that I'd just like to highlight quickly. Again, just in terms of where we are from a financial perspective, we were where we thought we would be. Our general fund revenues were about 86% of what we thought were going to be budgeted for fiscal year 14. Our expenditures were about 63% of what we had budgeted. Again, all things being equal, you'd think that we would be at about 75% because it's your sort of three-fourths of the way through the year. Obviously, our revenues and our expenditures are a little lumpy. We get revenues from taxes which are assessed and given to us at, at non-regular intervals through the year. And so seeing that we had 86% of our revenues as of this time period is probably a good thing. We want to make sure we get as much revenue in as soon as possible. So that's good. Seeing that our expenditures. as much revenue in as soon as possible. So that's good. Seeing that our expenditures were about 63%, we've got some other discussions further on in the document about why that was, but it certainly didn't seem out of context. And so we, it didn't provide us any reasons to, to, to think that anything was to be of concern. I tried to highlight just a few of the items that we had accomplished through that first quarter. As you remember, we started some of the anti-littering initiative efforts. We started to expand the city's food composting program. We got some of the Safegro information up and running. We issued the solicitation for the city-owned lot at the Tacoma Junction. In addition, we hosted a crime summit here in the auditorium, which was attended by lots of folks. We had a number of We Are Tacoma Art Series programs in that first quarter of this calendar year, a total of 19 programs. We started some of our little free libraries. I'd like to remind people that was also sort of the advent. I think we had five storms in that, in that quarter. And so again, just a thank you to Public Works who had to handle those five storms in one quarter. I think that's got to be some sort of a record. I think we had six storms in total this past year. So they, they really did a great job, as well as the police, in, in terms of keeping our, our city and streets safe during that period of time. I will say, just before I open it up for, for any questions, we, and I, I heard this comment during the, the budget amendment section as well, that I don't think any staff either particularly really loves the way that we're doing our budget amendments. They're, they can be a little bulky and, and difficult. And so I think we will be trying to find something that's a little bit clearer and easier, so long as Yvonne gives us the okay that we can do something like that. Similarly, you know, we've, we've tried to continue to innovate as it relates to the quarterly reports. And we, we may even, there's a, some internal discussion that we're going to have over the next couple of months, just to see if there are ways that we can continue to try to innovate in terms of this document. I think some of the, some of the comments I had heard from council is to make sure that we've got metrics that are easily comparable. I think in our, I'll just point to our communications section, which I think is on page, starts on page six. This is really the first quarter that we're getting some really good Google Analytics data points around bounce rate, percentage of users viewing the website. Again, bounce rate is how quickly people are coming off of our site, number of page views, and average site duration. And so going forward, we're going to have lots of good data to compare with. The other comment that I heard from council was to try to continue to provide easy, easy ways to track projects. And so I'll point you to page 18, which Housing and Community Development continues to try to highlight their projects and sort of where they are generally with the status of that. I think the final thing that I'd heard is to try to make this, and I've heard this from a few residents as well, is to continue to try to make this document digestible. It can sometimes be a little bit much to, to take in. And so one of the things that we're contemplating is maybe shortening this up a little bit and making it more of a presentation, highlighting some of the important parts, but maybe keeping some of this more dense detail, the 30 to 50-page document, for maybe more of an annual-ish or semi-annual-ish conversation. But quarterly, to come back with more highlighted information, more stats and so forth that we find interesting as opposed to going through the longer version of this every single quarter. But just wanted to discuss that briefly with you all. So open to take any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you. This is very helpful, and I think the presentation, while it's always nice to hear that staff wants to improve upon it, I think it was very useful information. On the last point the City Manager just made about highlighting, I just, I wouldn't lose some of the sort of what I call qualitative examples, because I think those are what make the work that the staff is doing on the ground really come alive. And also, I, I feel like it makes it easier, at least for me personally, communicating with constituents to point to specific programs, activities. The numbers are great, and as somebody who's a trained statistician, I always like numbers. However, I, I hope that we don't lose some of that qualitative data as well. And I, just to point on particularly the communications page, on page six, you know, I'm glad we had the, the top webpage views to see what people are, are looking at. It'll be nice to have some comparisons moving forward. The one question I had was under the number of page views. We say the goal should be to increase this number, the number of page views. I was just curious, and it doesn't have to be a question that is answered tonight, because that may come from some of the other staff. But why that would be a goal versus people, you know, sometimes somebody, it might actually be, somebody wants to get to the website, they find what they need very easily, they're in, they're out, that's it. That's a goal, making it. So I'd just be curious about-
Yeah, I can answer that. I think that, I think that sometimes it's a goal, sometimes it's not a goal. One of the things that we are concerned about are the number of people who go in and, especially if they're on mobile devices, just leave because they haven't found what they want. So part of it is to make sure that they get to what they want. But, but yes, we don't necessarily want to just trap them in the system.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Kenner, for this report. And I think it's excellent. I, I wouldn't want to lose the detail, but I would, I would be concerned about the amount of time that's, that has to be spent to put the report together quarterly. And so kind of a detailed annual report would, I think, be very good. But I, I would also agree with Councilmember Stewart that I wouldn't want to lose the, the detail, but I like your idea of something that's kind of a higher-level view. And so maybe an executive summary on the, at the beginning would be, be a way to address that, where the highlights are, are made in the summary, and then the, the volume of supportive data is behind that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kenner, I appreciate the report. Couple of questions. Do we know the number of times our shows that we produce are, are aired on the County, Montgomery County Report?
We, I think we can get that for you.
Okay. And what about, I saw the piece about Twitter and Facebook. Do we know how many times tweets are retweeted?
I don't, well, I mean, to a certain extent.
Because that just shows you, you know, how deep, whatever, right.
You can, you can get that. I can tell them how if they need to.
And the FB, our Facebook shares, do we have that information too, or can we get that?
We have, we'll see what we can get.
Okay. And then I, I saw in the report that, you know, Facebook has changed their policies, and they do it all the time. So it's more difficult to push information out. Have we considered, on big topics, you know, buying Facebook ads so that we can push the particular item to a larger audience?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. And the last thing is on page 17 on the Emergency Assistance Fund, the last sentence cuts off prematurely.
Yes.
Offhand.
Yes.
What that's, okay. But thank you very much. It was a great report, and I look forward to your future ideas.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you as well for the report. A couple of comments. First, you indicated that we would be getting, sort of catching up on timing with the fourth quarter report, and that, and that would be better. I would prefer speed over quality in this case. I, I see this as a document that is granular and helps us understand a lot of the content that would subsequently come in the budget and helps us influence it, the metrics and other things that show up in the budget. So to me, having, you know, detailed narrative and, and, I don't know, just, just a lot of this stuff is okay to me, less polished. I hear and agree with, I, Councilmember Siemens' comment about, you know, not making it too much staff time. So for me, that's one way to do it, is just to give us pretty, pretty raw information, which is my sense of what you're doing here. A couple of comments. I noticed, I think, that in a couple of years running, we've had some portion of either the small or the large grants that get moved from one budget year to the next. And so I'm interested in figuring out, what is the, what is the grant proposal deadline that we, we could potentially start using that would allow us to try to have a higher chance of getting grants done within a year? Because spending it when we want to spend it is a better thing. That, that, there'll always be some that don't get spent, I understand. The, the Councilmember Smith just brought up the question of Twitter and Facebook and things. On Google right now, if you Google Tacoma Park, the picture that comes up in the side, right side, is Silver Spring. So I've, I've filed a complaint on this, but it may help for the city staff to do so too. It's a lovely picture of Majestic 20 Theater. If anyone has some development ideas for the junction, maybe, maybe that's someone's plan. I'd ask, and I, all of us have different networks through which we communicate. And so a report like this has little pieces in it that don't show up anywhere else. One of the best ways to, to deliver that is to give us an image or a paragraph that comes from this report that the city most wants to get shared. And there's lots of graphics in here, and there's tables. So any one of those pieces delivered to us as an image file that comes with the report is something that Councilmember Grimes can put on his Facebook page, or another council member can put on a listserv, or another one can send their, in their updates. That would take a lot of the work, at least for me, out of trying to communicate some of this stuff. And there's some interesting stuff in here that doesn't come up any other way. So that's just a suggestion. And then finally, I note in here, there's an update on the city selling eight, I think, bulk bins, 36-gallon bulk bins. I was speaking to Ace Hardware, the manager of Ace Hardware today, and I guess he'd been in some negotiations with the city staff about Ace trying to partner with the city to offer, to, to help sell more big recycling bins or big trashcans. And so to the extent that we can have a partnership with businesses to help deliver some of the little pieces of infrastructure that, that our Public Works Department uses, that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, it's interesting you should mention Ace Hardware. That, that, that's sort of happening because of my intervention. I've been getting calls from residents wanting to know when they could get some more of these blue 32-gallon recycling containers. And I found out from our Public Works Director that we had given away 100 of these things a couple fiscal years ago, and then another 100 the next fiscal year. And I, I said, well, how much do these things cost? And she said, well, these, the little, the yellow ones cost the city $8 each. And so they do give those away free ad nauseam. But the big ones, they run about 40, I have all these numbers in my head, about $42 each. And I said, well, you know, I, I don't see, when you consider that our, our stormwater maintenance fee that we charge is $58, and we're giving people a $42 container for free, we got our priorities mixed up. And so I said, couldn't we work out something where maybe the city can develop a coupon where we would provide a discount for our people to maybe go to Ace Hardware and buy the same container? And I talked with Eric at, at Ace and got him in touch with Daryl, and they're, and they're apparently been talking, been working it out, sort of on maybe a pilot basis, to see if something like that might work. Because people want these things, but I just don't think it's reasonable for people, our tax, our residents, to expect us just to give them out free. They're just too expensive. So anyway, the, the thing that I wanted to mention was, and using the, the page six website data is a perfect example. I mean, these are numbers, you know, pages per session and average session duration, and, and that, that sort of stuff that are utterly meaningless numbers to me. And because, and there's probably other data like that in here, and I don't know because I haven't read it. But it seems to me that as we go through these things quarter by quarter by quarter, or whatever blocks of time on an annualized basis, that what we need to be seeing more of are trends. You know, things that are going in the directions and graphs and said, so that if the webs, the use of our website is actually improving by whatever criteria measures that, then we'll know that. I mean, but seeing data like this is, doesn't tell us anything. So I'd love to see us be able to, 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 to develop. And it, it doesn't need to be big charts. It could just be the narrative that says, yes, this is good, and, and we're moving in this direction, and we've gotten, you know, double the number of, of page views in the last year because, et cetera. Otherwise, and I would encourage, encourage staff to look and, and to try to do that so that, because it's, it's where we're headed that's as equally as important as the absolute numbers.
Absolutely. This is, I failed to mention, Google Analytics has really allowed us, really for the first time, to get some of this information. So you're, you're exactly right. This has very little context, except as you compare mobile and tablet users to sort of regular standard computer users. But theoretically, the next quarter that we do it and subsequent quarters, we will, we'll start to have some of that trend data, because we can now accurately track this.
And I'll just add, for what it's worth, since two people have talked about the big blue recycling containers, for what it's worth, I heard from somebody today who understood that they, that the city has some of those, but they're currently, there's none of them that's put together, and they need to be assembled. And he offered to assemble them all. So if that's the case, and that would help, I can put him in contact with Public Works.
I don't think that's consistent with the law. There's nothing to assemble.
I don't know. I don't know. Wheels in the lid? I don't know.
Wheels in the lid? Who knows?
So, any more comments on this report? Okay. Thank you, staff. Thank you very much. And that's our final item for this evening. And we are adjourned.